Did we just go live? Okay, great. Okay, sorry. It was just waiting for the confirmation that we were live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to this Sunshine Coast Regional District Special Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, July 26, 2022. I'd like to acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District operates on the traditional territories within the seashell and the Squamish First Nations, and we're very grateful to be here. So, we have an agenda in front of us today, and I would like to ask first if there's any items to be added, or changed, or reordered, or removed, or any other things you'd like to do. Dance on the agenda? No, just kidding. No, sorry. I'm a little punchy. Getting caught in traffic does that to you in the morning. Sorry. So with that, I'm going to look for a motion to adopt the agenda, please. So moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. We have no presentations or delegations at this time, so we will move on to the reports. I'm going to ask for a motion to receive all reports, please. So moved, seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Up first, Annex A, number two on your agenda, the Solid Waste Management Plan Public and Technical Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. So we will go over to our Strategic Planning Coordinator and get an introduction on this. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, Chair. The purpose of the report is to seek approval of the Terms of Reference and initiate the Public and Technical Advisory Committee, as referred to as PTAC. PTAC will support the review and update of the SCRD's 2011 Solid Waste Management Plan. The update process will take about two years to complete and will include engaging with community on the guiding principles, targets, programs, and services, and the long-term waste disposal option for the region following the closure of the seashell landfall. To support the update of the plan, staff are recommending an advisory committee that would combine public and technical members and include one representative from the SCRD Board as a committee member, as recommended by the province. Staff will begin recruitment in late August and present the applications to the Board in late November to make appointments. And our plan is for the first PTAC committee meeting to take place in December or early 2023. Staff are happy to answer any questions you have about the report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Whitman. And with that, I'll go to directors. Questions? We'll start with Director McMahon.
Right. I think I'm organized. Yeah. So, lots of questions. On page two, under non-voting advisory, I'd like to make sure that Gibson's recycling is added as a non-voting member of the committee. And on page six, the SCRD elected rep is a voting rep on the committee. I don't think we've done that before. On the other committees that we are on, we are a non-voting rep. Is there a reason for that?
Thank you for the question. I will respond to the second part. The provincial guide requires voting, or recommends a voting member to be part of the committee, and we confirm that other PTACs are currently in place within BC. Some of the other local governments also have one, and sometimes even two, voting members, members of the Board on the PTAC committee.
Director McMahon, back to you.
Sure. Where's the rest of the lineup of questions? Gee. I know this is a two-year term that people are committing to, but do we have an idea how long we expect the duration of this committee will be?
The committee will be in place until we submit the application for the updated plan to the province. So we anticipate that would take two years. So it would be a two-year committee. However, if the timeline stretches to two and a half years, the committee would be in place until then.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the report or the terms of reference? Oh, Director Hiltz?
Yeah, thanks. I'm on number four, meeting arrangements, 4.2, virtually or in person. So is hybrid in that? Because it says virtually, so it's either or. So that was a question about the hybridization of the meeting format.
Okay. Over to staff.
Thank you for the question. So legislatively, yes, it is permissible. The factor for us to consider at that point is, will our hybrid meeting structure be in place? And if it is, we will be able to facilitate those meetings in hybrid form.
Follow-up, Director Hiltz?
Yeah. So does that need to be included? It doesn't usually go, it's virtual, or it's in person. And do we need to actually include that in the, so that people who read this know that, or it's dependent actually on the readiness of the organization to be able to provide hybrid meetings?
Which I expect we will have in place, and we do have in place. Is it a question of the wording? For clarity?
Yes, yes.
We can use the word hybrid in place of virtually, if that language is more common, perhaps, to the public.
Yes.
We can make that change.
Sure. Housekeeping?
Housekeeping. Anything else we need to dust? Director Seekers?
Thank you. I guess this would be a question for staff. If I look at the report, on page two, talks about voting members and then non-voting technical advisors. And in voting members, it says six to 11 with experience in solid waste recycling and composting issues. And with regards to Gibson's recycling, I'm wondering if they could be on as a voting member, or if that would be a conflict for them, and they would need to go on as a non-voting technical advisor.
Staff, any comment on that?
Thank you for the question. They could be on the committee as a voting member. There's no technical people can, are people that have an interest in the business at hand. Because they are not, there might be a voting member, but it's still voting under recommendation to the Board, and the Board is the ultimate decision-making. So as long as the Board is not in conflict of interest, that's where it's guaranteed.
Thank you. That's, I mean, that clarification, because then, I mean, we're going to be looking for applications. They could potentially apply for that, then. Thanks.
Great. Okay. Directors, any other questions? Corporate Officer, do you want us to add anything to the recommendation in regards to the edits that we've just made, or is it necessary? No?
I think we have it. I think we're good.
Okay, perfect. All right. So, directors, seeing no more questions, I'm going to ask for somebody to move the recommendations on page number one. Director Seekers, seconded by Director Ties. Any further comment? Nope. Fantastic. It's good to see this moving forward. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next up, we have Annex B, number three on your agenda, and its Board Policy Regarding Official Community Plan Amendments. And Senior Planner Clark, are you introducing this? Or, yes, excellent. Okay. We'll just let the microphones get all moved around there, and over to Senior Planner Clark.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of slides to share with you this morning, so bear with me here as I share my screen. Thank you. And good morning. Today, staff are bringing you a piece of work that is both a reflection and a proposal. It's based on a holistic look back over the last few years of planning work at SCRD, including the changing needs and pressures in our community. Especially, it is a reflection of what we've heard during recent public information meetings associated with Bylaw 722. Staff have acted on this reflection to develop a proposal, and today we are inviting the committee's consideration of developing and implementing a board policy to guide the review of OCP amendment applications in future. A goal of this policy is to assist us as a community and a set of decision-makers to stay focused on the big picture, as you see here on your screen. As we consider amendments to OCPs, we want to ensure key ingredients are negotiated and best practices followed for growing a healthy, resilient Sunshine Coast. Our community, like others, is experiencing housing crisis, atmospheric rivers, droughts, other climate impacts, as you know, record numbers of unlawful land alterations in a time of land development boom. In this time, we've heard community wishes to add density in appropriate areas for housing that is affordable, to conserve biodiversity, to do corridor planning, add resilience in the face of climate change, and the need to participate intentionally in reconciliation. It is recognized that SCRD's seven OCPs are aging planning infrastructure that are in need of modernizing for the goals and challenges of today, as well as many generations ahead. There is a current trend of initial proposals requesting to deviate from adopted OCPs without rationale, or without providing details for specific community benefits in return, sometimes without consideration of planning best practices, or the broad array of existing SCRD policies and plans that seek to build the resilient and livable community we are all looking for. At the recent public information meetings for zoning bylaw 722, staff received feedback that the bylaw update had not gone far enough toward innovative community building, calling on staff and directors to be bold and brave. Staff are listening. We feel a similar urgency, and we are eager to get to the proactive planning work that our community needs. One challenge here is that there is a limit to what a zoning bylaw can achieve without the corresponding guiding policy and official community plans. And so, the proposed solution that we bring forward today is a board policy on OCP amendments drafted in response to what we have heard and what we have seen over the last few years. 722 feedback and staff reflections are combined here with a proposal to add OCP amendment policy as an interim tool to guide decision-making in advance of the significant OCP renewal work that we know is needed. Adding a board policy outlines areas for consideration. It's a non-prescriptive step that we can take now to ensure holistic, consistent review is applied to each OCP amendment application as they come forward for review. It is akin to the existing board policy for development variance permits, as you've seen us raise lately. This policy direction would focus OCP amendment conversations from the time of property inquiry through staff analysis to board consideration, and ensures that potential community benefits are not left on the table during negotiation with developers. It is not designed or intended to be a prescription, rather a values lens through which we can consider how and where applications align with today's planning profession's best practices, as well as community wishes. In your agenda today, staff have attached a draft-to-date policy to provide a sense of the tool that is imagined at this point. And today, staff are bringing forward the question to you, committee, of whether you would like staff to proceed with drafting an OCP amendment policy for consideration as a short-term solution, taking into account feedback from our corresponding First Nations, APCs, and Roberts Creek OCPC. Thank you. And staff are here to take any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much, Senior Planner Clark. I'll get you to stop sharing your screen. There we go. Perfect. First off, I'd like to say thank you for bringing this forward. It provides another kind of checklist tool for someone as they're looking through the processes, or purchasing within the regional district. And I think that's a great idea. And I will, when we get to the point of doing the recommendations, I will ask for a few other community associations maybe to be added to the list as well. I know you've mentioned, Roberts Creek OCPC wasn't specifically said, but you did mention that in your comments. I know that was one of the ones I had flagged. My Half Moon Bay Community Association has also, they've got a bit of a, or they've started an OCP committee as well, that they call the Half Moon Bay Community Development Forum, that I'd like to have added to that. But I was wondering if there were other community associations, if our regular community associations, or FARA, maybe, the Pender Harbor and Area Residents Association. Oh, I did remember, Ish. Thank you, Director Lee. But I'm thinking there's a few organizations like that that would have a keen interest in providing some feedback on that. But with that, I will go to directors and see if there's any other comments or questions. Director Seekers?
Thank you. Very aspirational. I don't, I can't think of anything you've missed. But I mean, we will hear from the communities. Are you also looking at referring this to the other governments on the Sunshine Coast, just for comment? Okay, that's, because that's not in here. Thank you. That's all I say. This is really good.
Yeah. And it's always the planning ahead, rather than the active, proactive, rather than being reactive, which is huge. So, Director McMahon, and then Director Hiltz?
Yes. I too really am appreciative of this way forward, because we're caught in this, you know, as I think I said before, this traffic jam of carts and horses, trying to, you know, update all of our various pieces of legislation and plans and so forth. So this is a good approach. I don't have any detailed comments on the draft so far. It's a lot to get my head around. I'm more thinking about the process in terms of the community consultation. I've already sent this out to my APC and given them a heads-up to start them thinking about it. Because just a one-week notice before a meeting, I think, is not maybe enough to really start this conversation and this series of thought. So I think we should communicate with our OCPs now and tell them that this is coming. I don't expect anybody's going to want to do a lot of work on this in August, August being what it is on the Sunshine Coast. But at least we can get people thinking. And it probably wouldn't hurt to remind people of where the line is between our authority and Modi on some of these things, because we can be aspirational about what we want Modi to do, but we don't have any control over that. So just to keep that in mind, because there's a number of things that, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Director McMahon. Director Hiltz?
Thanks, Chair. I'm just putting my hand down. Yeah, I think this, it's quite a significant tool for staff. So a couple of questions. So, an interim policy, which suggests that there will be a, more of a firm policy later on. So do interim policies have a beginning and an end opposed to an open-ended end? I guess that's one question. And the negotiation with applicants is, you know, to get better applications on the floor. And I'm thinking, we're kind of going retrospectively. We looked at the past. And if we had these tools in the past, what, how would these applications, which didn't kind of unroll as we might have liked them, how would that have changed how they came to the Board, I guess? Like a bit of a role play, if we had this in place in the past, how would applications that have already gone through the process make it here? Would they still make it? Would applicants have a chance to appeal? Because as I understand it, planning goes, I pay the money, I want it on the table, no matter how about the details. So like, could this actually stop an applicant from moving something forward, I guess? Because the staff become kind of the vetters, I suppose, in some ways? So a little bit of details about, because we're delegating some vetting process to staff to kind of craft or exclude perhaps other applications. So I think I can stop there. Thanks.
Go ahead, GM Hall.
Thank you for the excellent questions. On the first part about interim, staff use that term in reference to the Board's approved work to renew official community plans, which will take some time. And so, the utility of maintaining this policy can be evaluated at the time we have new official community plans. Similar to the way that we've used our development variance policy, even having robust land use bylaws doesn't, to staff's mind, doesn't necessarily mean that the utility of having a policy like this would go away. But that's for a future committee to decide. And staff look forward to facilitating a conversation at that time, and reaching that point in our planning evolution. And on the second part, planning staff are here to serve the community, and that's both applicants and the community at large. And so, we would, of course, serve an applicant who wants to bring forward an application, regardless of how much planning merit staff might judge it to have. This policy will assist both parties in bringing forward a better product by the time that you, on the other side of the boardroom, see it. And so, whether or not it will, it's difficult to speculate on whether it would reduce the number of applications, but the intention is, and we've seen this with our, with the equivalent development variance policy, that it raises the quality of what we see. We as staff, who are doing the work during the negotiation period to bring something forward, and you as decision-makers. Thanks.
Thank you, GM Hall. Director McMahon?
Yes, I remember in a recent report, I think it was the water report, there was a chart. It looked like little atoms or something, showing the relationship between all the moving pieces and the different plans in the SCRD that are affected by water policy. It would be brilliant to have some kind of a chart that shows all the moving pieces, and the ones that belong to us, but also some of the ones that don't belong to us but are also important, like the foundation agreement, Modi's Highway 101 bypass thing. But the Squamish are also doing a land use plan, right? There's a lot of pieces out there in the planning universe that are just considerations when we're moving forward. And it's hard to keep track of, and it's certainly hard when it's in print, but sometimes if you've got a chart, it can be helpful. When, our long-awaited planning website thing, you know, that interactive map with the information, what's the ETA on that?
Thanks for the question. I can offer a part of a response. There's two batches of work going on, and the piece I'm not entirely clear on, and I apologize for that, is how they converge. But planning is upping our game with the use of Let's Talk SCRD. And so we've seen that with a number of projects. And we know we have the capacity to do that for future development files. But integrating that with our website, which is in the renewal phase, and we're, I think, about five months out from that launch, hasn't been fully mapped out. So, early 2023 would be my rough estimation. Thank you.
Yes, certainly.
That's the one that's what's building in my neighborhood, like Nanaimo?
Yeah. That is where staff would like to go. That's where we intend to go. And we have the tools in the toolbox now, and once the overall website is updated, we'll be able to stick them together. Thanks.
Fantastic. Anticipating that with glee. Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I think there was one question that Director Hiltz asked that I didn't think was answered there, and that is, how would it have changed the failed applications? And I know of several that I was disappointed that didn't go through after a lot of work by staff. Something to do with dynamic rural, for instance. So would this have helped or changed that process?
Yeah, thanks for the question. It's difficult to retroactively map this against individual applications, but speaking in general... against individual applications. But speaking in general, having a policy like this would provide a consistent, transparent, agreed-upon set of planning aspects, perhaps values, that would be, would be shared by staff and the board, and would support applicants to understand the mark that they're aiming for. And as Senior Planner Clerk said, this isn't prescriptive. And so, looking at the draft here, which I'm confident will evolve through community input, not every development would be able to put a checkmark beside every aspect in that policy, of course. But the goal is that we get closer to our vision of what a good OCP amendment looks like. And so, extrapolating that backwards, I would hope that we'd have more clearly rationalized applications that, on which either the applicant or staff, or ideally both, are able to articulate the community benefit of them, and ultimately better planning outcomes. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Director Hiltz, please.
Thanks, Chair. I, I guess what I'm trying to balance off is the policy versus the guiding documents of the applicants. As we, we now have, we're, like, if I was to take the wastewater application, we say wastewater will be, the policy statement is we will deal with them as case by case. And then staff are developing their own guide to assist applicants in producing those things. And in this case, it seems like the guide would be kind of the policy. So, I'm just kind of trying to sort out th- those pieces, you know, in, in one, one silo, the wastewater silo, we're doing it as a guide. And in the planning, we're doing it as a policy. So, I'm just trying to understand kind of how, why each silo is doing it a little bit differently, I suppose. And then, the communications to applicants. So, right now, the OCP and zoning applicant is combined together. There's one application. There's not a lot of guidance on there of, you know, the DVP application has spaces for why you want to do this. The OCP doesn't, I don't see any place on that form to do that. So, would part of this policy development change the guide that the applicants are seeing? And, and so, I'm just kind of trying to understand the little, the different bits, policy versus the guiding principles versus the application forms, and just how those pieces would fit together. And they, they do seem to be a little bit different in the wastewater side from the planning side. And just, is there a difference there? Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the questions. I'm, staff are torn, I am torn, about how much to dig in versus focusing on the question of, do we want to take this forward to the community for conversation? The, the idea of a policy is, is one that we believe is based on planning best practice. And it responds to the fact that OCP amendments are board decisions undertaken with, with community input. And they take a lot of time. They take, they take a lot of time for staff to process, months sometimes. And so, we, we can benefit our, our organization and the community by being efficient and transparent. And that's where a policy is felt to be the right tool. And there was a second part to your question, Director. Oh, the application.
The application, yes.
Thank you. Yep, staff have anticipated that. And thankfully, and with board support, we're going forward into a process review. That's one of the questions we want to look at, is how can we, how can we best line up our application tools to support quality applications? Thanks.
Okay, over to Director Siegers, please.
So, I think we see in the community that there are some owners, developers, not many, but there are some, who find that the OCP doesn't necessarily envision what they see for the piece of property that they're working with. And so, they come forward with a proposal. Whether or not it's in the best interest of the community, it's in the best interests of them, you know, where they want to go. I think this provides a document for the community and for our staff to say, if we're going to go through this, what, what's the, the lens we're going to look at it through and, and evaluate it through? And I think for some of those, it might give them pause. They might say, okay, how would I actually align with this? Or do I? So that staff and the community know that this is what we're aiming towards. So, see how you can make it fit inside of that. If it doesn't, there's no guarantee it's going to get approved, or that we'll even work on it. Because, just because you think it's a good idea doesn't necessarily mean it's in the best interest of the community. So, I think this is a framework for that, to, to also then have staff and us put together a list of the things we should see in the OCP, because that'll be part of the process that we're going forward with. How do we revise those? And how do we operationalize these and put these in as well in the, in the various areas? So, I think it's a great first step and a really good way to see if the community's behind us in looking. Because the community says this, are they really behind it? Right? That's what they say. So, I think it'll be interesting to see how it plays out.
And it'll provide to be an interesting filter or lens to look, for anyone that is looking at purchasing a property and doing some amendments or changes to it, or asking for those. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's a great, it's going to be a great tool. And the way I envision this is, you know, it's similar to, you know, how do you, how does a bill become law? Well, this is how you do an OCP amendment. And I've got a whole video in my head already. But, sorry, I'm, I'm loving this. So, over to Director Hiltz.
Yeah, and, and totally supportive of it. For, for me, what Director Sieg, Director Siegers is sort of talking about is the, the unofficial community plan. We have the official community plan. And some people think there's another community plan out there, which some people have. I call it the unofficial community plan. So, I, I think this is bringing them together. And yeah, I, it's just all the pieces and how it comes together. But yeah, to- totally supportive. And I would be happy to move the motion as, as it is presented.
I, I will go to you when it comes to that time. But we're going to go over to GM Hall first.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Don't want to interrupt business. Just wanted to, I don't know if it's frame or reframe the, the last couple of comments, just to say that the points that are in the draft policy have been, they have been extracted from official community plans. So, there's not, there's no new policy here. It's pulling out stuff that applicants should think about and that gives us a platform for discussion, as, as a number of directors have said. Thanks.
And I can just see this on one of our SCRD brochures right now already. So, like the subdivision one and everything else. So, I think it's great. So, Director Ties.
Yeah, it, it looks like we're moving towards, moving these recommendations. And I'm just wondering whether we need to add all the other community groups as part of the referral, like, and that the draft OCP policy be referred to the APCs, the Roberts Creek OCPC, the, and whichever other, the Half Moon Bay Community Association, and was it?
The Town of Gibson's.
And plus the Town of Gibson's and District of Seashell.
Okay, so let's, I'm going to look over to the corporate officer, because I know our manager of communications has a list of all, all of the organizations that he contacts, like the community associations and that kind of thing. I'm wondering how prescriptive you want us to be in this list, or if we have specific ones that, like, for example, the RC, or the RC OCPC, and FARA, and, yeah. So, corporate officer, how prescriptive do you want us to be in this list? Or I guess, and GM Hall as well, so.
Thank you for the question, Chair. My recommendation would be if there's particular associations, that you be very prescriptive about what those are. And then generally speaking, we can also refer to the, the outreach that we've done with other community groups. So, we can specifically name the groups that have been named, and then also ensure that it goes to the other community groups that we are actively doing consultation with.
Okay, so the list I have here is the RC OCPC. I have Half Moon Bay Community Association. I have FARA, District of Seashell, Town of Gibson's, SIGD. I'd also like to add the Half Moon Bay Environmental Society. They're keenly interested in OCP amendments as well. And then I'd look to the directors if there's any other ones that you'd like to have added, please. Or is that, that list is sufficient?
Eggmont.
Eggmont Community Association. Any other specifics, Director Hiltz?
There, there's a communications plan be, being developed, so I would just.
You're happy to differ to that.
Letting the staff figure it out, yeah.
Perfect. Okay, great. So, we haven't officially made the motion, but we'll add that in. And then I'll go to Director Hiltz to make the amended motion. Because you were the first one to, to say that.
Have we made an amendment?
Well, we've, we've added those in, but we haven't actually made the motion. So, you can make it as an amended recommendation.
Okay, I will make that as an amended recommendation based on page 10.
Perfect.
Thanks.
And Director Ties, you were the second one to say that, so I'll let you second it. And I'll let Director McMahon third it. Director Lee will fourth it, and I will fifth it. Officially, I'll call the question on that, role directors only. All those in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Yes, Director McMahon.
I thought we could have a brief commercial for the Voyant Alert System. Because anyone who's watching us may have seen us all pick up our phones, because we just got a Voyant Alert notice. So, it works.
Okay.
And anyone who's not signed up for it should be signed up.
Okay, so this commercial message is brought to you from Area E, Elphinstone, Director McMahon. Don't forget to sign up for the Voyant Alert messaging system. We've just had a message come out from the Sunshine Coast Regional District that it is going to, there is a heat advisory for today. So, please make sure that you sign up for that. And Director McMahon, can you remind us where you sign up for it? Because I didn't get the message.
On the SCRD website. You should be able to find it there.
Excellent. At SCRD.ca. Yeah, and, or download the app. So, great. Okay. This message brought to you by Director McMahon. Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay, so, moving on. Thank you very much, Planner Clerk. And we will move on to Annex C, pages 19 to 21 of the package. Number four on your agenda, the Mason Road site lease renewal. And we'll go over to our General Manager of Community Services, Shelley Gagnon. Over to you, Ms. Gagnon. What's that? Oh, sorry. Shelley, we can't hear you. There's a volume issue here in the boardroom. Just.
Can you hear it all?
No. Okay, Director Toth can hear you. So, anybody who's in the webinar can hear you. We just cannot hear you in the boardroom. So, just bear with us one moment, please, and we'll get the volume turned up here. We could, something must have turned down. I couldn't hear IT when they counted us down either, though, coming to think of it. So, just one moment, please, as we deal with technical issues. We'll just take a two-minute break while we're just getting this sorted. So, yes. So, hang on there. We'll be right back to you.
Is the volume button there covered?
Yeah, no, everybody, yeah. Nobody's sure on how to touch the volume button.
What am I going to get, five?
Thank you, and welcome back to the Special Committee of the Hall for Tuesday, July 26, 2022. We've got our volume issues sorted out, and we will move on. And, and we will now be able to hear from a senior manager, or pardon me, General Manager Gagnon. Over to you, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair members of the committee. It'll be a little bit weird. I'm signed in in two places, because I just took a walk down to the boardroom, thought it might be easier to be here in person. So, thank you. The report before you is fairly straightforward, an administrative task to ensure that we renew our current lease agreement for our Mason Road facility, which is obviously an important operational piece of land and facilities for our fleet, transit, utilities, and parks divisions. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, GM. Over to directors. Any questions regarding this site lease renewal for Mason Road? Director Hiltz.
Thanks, Chair. I have one question. And it was top of page 20. It's about the management plan. So, there's the, the application, site plan, management plan, fee. Is there, I'm guessing site plan is the geographical layout. Is there a management plan for Mason Yards now? Or is that going to be developed? Thanks. Thanks.
Management Plan is actually a form document that has to be filled in, and it's provided by the province. So we just have to go through that and complete that plan itself, similar to other 10-year applications. Thank you.
Okay, Director Seekers.
Thank you. Given that we're applying for a renewal, is there an opportunity to apply for an expansion as part of that? Or is that a separate application?
Thank you for the question. Those are separate issues, so we will need to apply for a renewal of our current lease. And then we are currently in conversations around a potential expansion of our footprint. Thank you.
Great. Good question, too. Director Thies?
Yeah, I see an application fee of $210. Is, is there an annual lease that we need to pay, or what's, what's the costs?
Thank you. This is a one-time fee. In terms of an annual fee, I believe in our year lease, 30 years ago, it was a dollar. So I would imagine there'll be some sort of administrative fee as part of the lease, but that's yet to be determined. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to move the recommendations on page 19 as presented.
Perfect, and I see Director McMahon has seconded that. Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Up next, Annex D, pages 22 to 34 of our package, number five on your agenda sheet. It is the 2022 Community Recreation Facilities Capital Funding Review. And we'll go over to our Manager of Asset Management, Mr. Kyle Doyle, or? Yep, we're good. Okay. Do we have a, um? Oh, okay. Perfect. Excellent. Mr. Doyle, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of the report is to follow up on a report last year where we presented options to sustainably fund recreation services, the capital renewal budget. The Board at the time directed us to come back in July of 2022 with a similar report presenting options. And we're here today with that report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Manager Doyle. I'll look to Directors. Any questions, Director Seekers?
Thank you. You've provided a couple of models here. And they're basically for funding. So Model 1 is increasing the tax component. Model 2 is using, attributing some of the funds from when debt gets paid off to increase the amount for capital. But what it also says in here is that we're only looking at the critical pieces. And we're not looking at the day-to-day maintenance increases that need to happen. It's kind of like, it's more the critical kinds of things. And because Model 3 talks about funding all components. I'm wondering if consideration has been given to a combination of Models 1 and 2. So Model 1 would be, we increase the taxes. But then we also take some of the, the money that is already being used to cover off debt to potentially then increase the funding so we can fund everything that's needed for recreation.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to show up as Kyle Doyle on the camera. But thank you for the question, because it's a great question. And I asked Kyle if I could take a first stab at the answer. I appreciate where you're going, because I'm going there, too. However, I would like to take it one step at a time. And so the Board has made a decision to fund critical components of the recreation centers only through this capital renewal plan. And we have a challenge with the capital renewal plan as it currently stands due to the decision to temporarily suspend the funding during COVID. That is an issue that the Board has asked us to bring back to deal with. And that is what the report is in front of you today. There are some next steps, and we will definitely plan on taking those. And have already had some conversations about how to introduce those, maybe how to workshop them as we may have a new board by then. But we definitely would like to go back and to take a wholesome look at our capital renewal plan for recreation facilities. And that also maybe include conversation in future years around an additional plan, perhaps, on how we fund future recreational facilities. So there are lots of steps in this plan, and we have had conversations on how we want to approach those. But this really is just about the current capital plan as it is, funding the critical pieces only. And a fulsome discussion on the entire plan is yet to come. And I'll turn it over to Manager Kyle Doyle, in case he has a follow-up to that.
Thank you for the question as well. I would just add to it, the, the two plans that were presented today reflect the original objective of the capital planning process, which was to mitigate fluctuations in taxation for the taxpayers. And so we've looked at it kind of from two perspectives. One is the capital renewal taxation just for that, and looking to get back to a consistent taxation for the critical capital items, which was a decision made in 2016. If we want to revisit the decision of what level of funding, it's something we'd really like to have that conversation in the future. The other plan looked at more of a broad perspective of all the taxation for recreation, including the existing debt funding for the facilities that were recently built, and looking at mitigating taxation on that kind of scope. So the two options in front of you are two of many, many different models that would satisfy the objective criteria of sustainable funding for these services. And there are a myriad of combinations that we could make in there. Just from a staff resource point of view, we thought this would be the most efficient way to present the information to you.
Great. Continue on through our speakers list. I have Director Thies, and then Director McMahon.
Yeah, thank you. One question I have is, if the planned recreation fees and charges review have anything to do with this, I guess it's probably more of an operational thing. So they probably don't work into the capital plan. But yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if there's any consideration given to that. And the, the other question I had was whether this will be going on to the property taxes or to the frontage fees? Because I think we're trying to do the capital through frontage fees. And so that's my other question.
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you for the question. I think the second part might be better answered by G M Perot. But for the first part, you'll notice in the attachments we've highlighted this year, there is a 5% of user fee contribution that moves towards the capital renewal budget. And we've highlighted that to facilitate this exact discussion, to, to kind of transparently show all the sources of funding for this. So if we do start talking about a revision of fees and charges, we can see how it impacts the capital plan pretty easily. But from a capital planning perspective, we don't try to influence that decision-making process as much, so.
Okay, and then I see our CFO, Ms. Perot, regarding the, the cap, the, the second part of Director Thies's question around the frontage fees and capital renewal.
Thank you, Chair. So that particular item was brought forward as part of the report last year. And we did bring a subsequent report on what the effects of that might be. And so we then established that it wasn't economically, it wasn't a positive outcome to transfer the frontage or the capital renewal to the frontage. We did change our financial sustainability plan to say where possible, because we wanted to make sure that it was very explicit that we were funding operations through one source of revenue and the capital renewal through the second. And so I think as we evolved through this particular discussion, we're going to revisit that, especially if we are going to be changing the source of funding for the capital renewal plan, which means there are several steps if we want to take that funding because it was intended for a very specific use. We would have to likely create a new bylaw. And we may have to seek, actually, I do have a, a question to the ministry right now as to what those steps might look like. Would it require public approval, for example? And, and we'd bring more financial options to the Board for consideration on what that would look like and what the subsequent steps would be. So again, as, as both Manager Doyle and G M Gagnon said, there's, there's a lot of considerations as part of that next steps.
Director Thies, do you have a follow-up or in? Okay, so I'll go to Director McMahon first, and then back to Director Thies.
Okay, I'll, I'll start by following up a bit on that. So back in 2006 or so, we had a referendum, and taxpayers agreed to fund two facilities, the Seashell Pool and the Gibson's Rec Center, the capital costs, over a period of 20 years. And that was the agreement. And if we are going to put any more taxes on, parcel taxes on, I feel that we need to go to the public for support before we can do that. We have a lot of unanswered questions about our recreation facilities. We don't have separate accounting for the different facilities, so we can't pull them out and make decisions about each facility separately, which we need to be able to do. Two of those facilities are relatively new, and it does make sense to be looking at the long-term capital plan for them. But two of them are much older and, and have various deficits, and we have not made any decisions about how we're going forward. Fees and services haven't been reviewed. We have not really reviewed our service levels or set, you know, really clear policies about what kind of recreation services we want to provide going forward. So once again, I find myself in the position where while I'm always willing to step up for increased taxes to support critical infrastructure like water and our landfill, I'm reluctant to put more money into recreation until we have a clearer idea where we're going with it and what the public supports. The increase suggested here is something just under 1% tax increase, I would, I would guesstimate. It's not huge. But we do need to have a really much broader conversation about what we want to do about our recreation facilities going forward. And, and I have little questions, too. Like, why would we need a new Zamboni when the old one's only about 15 years old? They don't rack up a lot of mileage. So, you know, how long do these things last? Are we, are we maintaining them adequately? Are we? Yeah, there, it's, it's, it's a can of worms. It's a really huge can of worms. I'll shut up now.
Okay. I, there wasn't a question. It was, it was, yeah. It, it was a philosophical rant. So we will go on to Director Thies.
Yeah, I just, I, I kind of had that question of how much will this affect our property taxes? But Director McMahon just answered it. But I do see that from 2022 to 2023, we're looking at about an 18% increase on our capital costs for Model 1. So it's, it's considerable, and, and then 2% thereafter. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you, Director Thies. Director Beamish?
I agree with Director McMahon. At this point, I would not be prepared to vote in favor of the recommendations. I would, I would vote to refer them to the budget process so that we can look at the total impact of tax decisions that we make, that are made by the Board in the coming year. But I'm not in favor of making tax decisions outside of the, the budgeting process. And so that we need to understand how this will impact people going in the, in the longer term. And I, I do like to be proactive in anticipating capital costs and, and the things of that nature. But I think it is part of the bigger conversation of taxation that we have to be considered. It's the end of July. I mean, people aren't paying attention, yet we're increasing taxes. And I just don't think that's the right timeframe to do that. But referring this to the, to the tax, the budget process and, and looking at this in context of everything that's going to be done in the future, I would be in favor of that.
I'm going to go to our CFO to comment on that. Please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to let the Board and the committee know that staff really wrestled with that, especially as we have just through our budget debrief, made a recommendation that the capital renewal plans would be deferred as part of the round, the pre-budget and round-one discussions. So because we had a very specific directive from last year to bring this particular report forward to July, we wanted to satisfy that. And so that's why part of the resolution includes, or the motion, the proposed recommendation, to bring this back and to at least integrate these particular figures in the preliminary budget figures. I think last year, too, the, the Board felt, I'm not going to tell you what you felt, but my recollection was that this particular Board, at the time of that decision, felt that they were the ones who had made these decisions and through whether or not it was COVID or subsequent to that to, to reinstate the funds. And so because this is a very long and very complex type of story, we felt that when trying to introduce this as part of Board orientation, it would be a difficult thing for a new Board to try to wrestle with potentially, to really follow the breadcrumbs, because it's a, it's a lot of, of information since 2016. So it was really to present in front of you, try to recommend that we integrate this particular figure into the, the taxation figures for next year. And that, of course, the final decision is not made until the financial plan bylaw is adopted. And we would service this as part of the pre-budget and budget deliberations for 2023.
Director Beamish, does that satisfy your concerns? You're still on mute.
I, I don't think that's clear from the recommendations. I just re-look into the recommendations. It does basically say that the 2023 budget be increased by, be increased in 2% thereafter. So I think it is a, a tax increase that we're proving here. It's not kind of how it's going to be integrated into the conversation later on.
Okay, so if there were an amendment to the recommendation saying that it would be brought forward to, as part of the preliminary budget process?
Referring the whole thing to preliminary budget process, I'd be happy with that. I would support that.
Okay, I'm going to go over to Manager Doyle.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just draw your attention to the fourth recommendation. It explicitly states there that we would take the amended increases as a draft for the financial plan and allow the newly appointed Board to assess the overall financial implication. So I think that, I think that recommendation, from my perspective, satisfies the concern that's being raised by Director Beamish.
Okay. I'm going to continue through the speakers list. I've got Director McMahon and then Director Seekers.
Right. I'm, I appreciate that staff are being prudent because, you know, the goal of asset management is to alert us when we are not sufficiently funding potentially asset replacements. So I do get it, and I do appreciate it. But I'm pretty much on the same page as Director Beamish. I was at a workshop on the weekend, and one of the things that they told us is that in recent polling across British Columbia, the number one concern of residents is cost of living. Because we are in a, a time of inflation that we have not seen the likes of which since, I don't know, the 1980s or something? And there is a lot of anxiety out there, and there are a lot of people being really pushed for costs. So it's hard for me to get on board with tax increases at this point. Thank you.
Director Seekers, and then Director Toth?
Thank you. I understand where Director McMahon and Director Beamish are going with this. But what, what staff are actually looking at having us fund in here are critical assets, are critical capital components of the. components of these facilities that are required to actually have them operate. So, we're not looking at anything further than that at this point. But then to address the concerns that both directors have, I'm wondering if we could reword the recommendations slightly, because I think in going forward, staff need to be able to come to the budget deliberations and say, here is the proposed potential capital increase, sorry, tax increase to deal with capital costs, and here are those costs, here are those items that we're looking at spending that on. Because then at that budget, the directors are going to have to make the choice. We either fund these and we do the tax increase, or we don't fund those and we don't do the tax increase. But we can bring both pieces together for them to do that deliberation at that time. So, I think in planning, staff need to know that, yes, this is something that's going to be considered at budget time, not that it's approved, but it will have to be part of their planning going forward. So, I'm wondering if we could change these recommendations slightly, and I'd look to staff to make sure that the wording I've got works for them. Okay, so I would say, and that staff plan for a 2023 contribution to community recreation to be increased by 177,000, whatever, and increased by 2% annually thereafter, to be funded through ad valorem taxation, property tax, and further that this be included as part of the draft 2023-2027 financial plan. So, they're planning to do this. We're not saying it's going to be included at this point. Very clear that this is something that's going to come forward at budget time to be paired with the actual expenditures that will be moving forward.
I'm wondering if on the last bullet, changing it, the word amended to proposed.
Yes, that would be great, too. I'm good with that.
So, okay. I'm going to go to the CFO, and then I'll go over to Director Toth.
Just wondering if it's more clear as far as ensuring that this gets completely forwarded to the budget and that the capital renewal plan be forwarded as part of the pre-budget deliberations, just that it's very, very clear that we have a separate and that the whole thing gets referred back there, but it's sort of one of those concepts where part of budget is we include it, but we still have this time to reevaluate it.
I'm willing to add that into the recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a couple of edits there. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. I think Director Seekers actually covered off sort of my concerns, because I don't want us to simply kick the can down the road. It's not fair to our residents, and it's not fair to staff, because, you know, we often run into the problem during budget that we don't have enough time to properly consult with our community. And I think it's important that they know that this is coming, short and simple. Whether people are supportive of it or not, or want us to make changes, the sooner they know we're talking about it, the sooner they can let us know their opinions on the matter. And, yeah, I'm fully supportive of the edits that just got made to the recommendations there, because I think that proposes that we're going to go down this path when we get to budget, but in the meantime, it does let the community know that this is something that we need to look at imminently.
Okay, and Director Beamish?
Yeah, I agree with the recommendations, the amendments that were proposed, because, again, it's taking that decision of doing a tax increase now and pushing it into the proper place, which is in the budget process. So, thank you.
Okay, and it provides further clarity to the recommendations. So, I'm going to go through this and tell you what I've got here on my notes, and we'll see if everybody's on the same page before we move the amended recommendations. So, well, there's no, right now, it's not even on the floor, so...
Actually, it is. I've put it on the floor, and it needs to be seconded or not at this point. So, you want to be clear about what somebody would be seconding? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
And technically, I didn't recognize you as the mover of the motion. I'm just, yes, so technically, it's not really even on the floor. So, what I have then, we have the first that the report be received, and then we have, and that staff plan for, and staff plan that the 2023 contribution to community recreation 615 be increased by 117,076 to 962370 and increased by 2% annually thereafter, and that the increase be forwarded through ad valorem taxation, property tax, and that the community recreation facilities' capital funding be forwarded, be brought forward to the preliminary budget process, which I believe is what came from the CFO, and further that the proposed increases be included as part of the draft 2023-2027 financial plan as detailed in Table 1 in order for the newly appointed board to assess the overall financial implication. That's what you wanted to move?
Did you say amended increases or proposed increases? Because that was one of the...
Proposed.
Proposed, okay.
Proposed.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Thank you.
And Laura, you have that? Okay, so Director Seekers has made that. Do I have a seconded? Seconded by Director Toth. Director Hiltz.
Yeah, the discussion about proposed or not proposed, further in the staff report, for me, what this recommendation is for the board to reset the pre-COVID kind of responses, that we want sustainable funding for critical infrastructure. So, that would be a board decision. For me, that's a value opposed to a proposed sustainability. So, I'm not sure for diluting kind of what, does this board support sustainable funding? And to put it back to essentially the pre-COVID state, that's how I'm seeing this report, is put it back to pre-COVID, say that we're going to have sustainable funding, this is what reestablishes that, and that's the commitment of this board, is that we want sustainable funding. And so, I don't see this as a tax increase. Tax increases come next March. This is about the board saying we want sustainable funding, and this is how staff says that this is how you're going to get it. So, that's why I was pretty well just fine with the recommendations that were there, because I don't see it as a budget issue. It's about reestablishing the board's perspective that sustainable funding is what we want, and taking COVID out of that and kind of reestablishing it. So, that's kind of how I was reading the recommendation. So, I don't know if I need to tinker with all the recommendations. It was good the way it was. So, if that was how staff is trying to, because it's, the term they use is to reestablish, and a proposed reestablishment doesn't seem very firm in my commitment. I'll propose or reestablish. I want to reestablish it. I want to be more committed to it. So, that's why I was kind of, the recommendation seems a bit waffly, not committed to the sustainable funding of the service, and this is what you need, and the next board will decide higher or lower. But it's to continue that process that we kind of, COVID, we took it out. So, that's kind of how I'm seeing it. So, I was fine with the original one. Thanks.
Director Seekers?
Thank you. I think the issue is also that we, there'll be a new board sitting here, and so we would be making, I mean, if it was us and we were, we'd made that decision now, we know coming into budget that this is what we've done, but having new groups sitting here, this will make sure that they have the background information to be able to affirm that direction or modify it going forward.
Okay. So, not seeing anyone else on the speakers list, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the recommendations that we have on the floor? Those opposed? Okay, would you like that recorded? Yes, okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Moving on, we have Annex E, number 6 on Your Agenda package, and it is pages 35 to 36. It is the Thin Client Procurement, and we, our manager of Information Services, GIS, I don't see him, but CFO?
Sorry, I was just on a call.
Okay. Gotcha. Over to you, CFO, please, for the Thin Client Procurement.
Oh, Thin Client Procurement, yes. So, the Thin Client Procurement is in front of you today, as we have procured these items in two phases. And so, now this particular item is over the $100,000 threshold, so requires board approval. This is important equipment for us to be able to virtualize our staff machines to allow for hybrid and virtual work. So, we'll take any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Director Seekers, over to you.
I'll make the recommendations as on page 35.
Okay, and I see that seconded by multiple people. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Up next, Annex F, pages 37 to 41 of our package, number 7 on Your Agenda sheet, the Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure Highway 101, alternate route study. I will go over to our CAO, as he's just entering the meeting right now. We'll just give him a moment, and he will be with us.
Thank you very much, Chair. You guys got through that item so quickly, I didn't make it all the way from my office to the boardroom. This item's really just here for a piece of information, sharing the information with you. This letter is a letter that staff have developed that is more of a companion piece to the letter that the board recently sent to Modi. We thought there was some value in reaching out with some specific staff-to-staff comments on their proposals, and that is what's there. The plan is that I would sign this off and get it sent off to Modi today.
Terrific. It's a great companion piece to the board letter to Modi, so thank you very much for that. Director McMahon?
Yeah, lots of good comments there. The only other thing that sort of occurs to me is that we don't have a process for planning with Modi. Like, we have no forum, we have no process. Their planning things just go ahead, and they occasionally send us a little notice or something, and that's about the size of it. For something that important, should we not have some sort of a process forum, what have you? Just a thought.
Director Seekers?
Thank you. I think this is something that we were following up with, with staff and at UBCM. So, we know that some of the meetings that we have are not with the appropriate people for doing the planning. So, we have staff investigating who that is so that we can request meetings at UBCM, and I think the deadline's in August or something like that, to set those up, so that we can actually put those kinds of things in place. So, work's being done behind the scenes on that. I agree. We need to be involved in those conversations. Thanks.
Okay. Director Hiltz?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, great, great points, and I really appreciate staff's comments. The question is the two. Is this to Pamela Ryan? I'm thinking the staff to staff. Is it going to Ministry or should it go to, is it addressed to Pamela Ryan? So, I was just wondering where staff is. Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure is a fairly big organization, so is it going to be targeted somewhere?
Who are we targeting, CAO?
Thanks for the question.
Or GM Hall?
Staff will ensure that this goes to not only the project lead, but also a district manager or local operations people, so that everyone who could possibly need to know will know. Thanks.
Perfect. CS coming. Excellent. Great. Okay. Oh, sorry, Director McMahon?
I know my little hand is hard to see on that screen. Could we CC our MLA, just so he's aware of our concerns with this process?
Okay. Great. Do you need a motion for that or no? Okay, wonderful. Okay, so with that, that is the end of our open agenda for the Special Committee of the Hall. We do have an in-camera session. So, first off, I'm going to ask for a motion for our alternate director from Area A to join the in-camera session, please. So moved and seconded? Seconded, all those in favor? Great, thank you. So, for anybody watching in the listening audience that may want to ask a question before we go in, or we're going to make the motion to go in camera, then we'll allow for any time for any questions from our non-existent audience unless somebody gets a question in there. So, we're going to move that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with Section 91K of the Community Charter Negotiations and Related Discussions, respecting the proposed provision of a municipal service that are at their preliminary stages, and that, in the view of the council, could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they were held in public. So, if I could have that as a motion, please. So moved, seconded, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the crickets? Okay, so we'll go in camera if IT can close that off.
And welcome back to the Special Committee of the Hull of the Sunshine Coast Regional District on July 26, 2022. And seeing no further business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn and move seconded. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Bye-bye. Any questions from the audience that may have come in?
Yes. How does this work with the nation?